I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for May 27, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/northadams. Click on the Live tab and then on the 2025.05.27 City Council Meeting. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Yes, here.
Bono?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Aluskalitz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Absent.
Sapienza?
Here.
Okay, we have eight members, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment on silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the March 25, 2025, meeting minutes?
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for hearing of visitors? Please step up to the mic and name an address for the record.
I'm Richard DeSade, I live at 472 Walnut Street. I'm here speaking to the item that Peter May has brought forth to the council and Ashley Shade has presented to you. I would ask you to vote for this. You know, I've been coming to city council meetings for a long time, but, you know, after going to the Memorial Day service yesterday and listening to the speeches and remembering members of my family that participated in World War II and the fact that they gave their lives or many years of their lives in fighting fascism, that, you know, I took it upon myself when I was at the University of Massachusetts, it's a steady fascism. And I took a course in the German department about the myth of the Third Reich. I took a course in the Italian department about modern contemporary Italy. I learned about fascism there and I never thought that, you know, I would have to stand up and say that I'm opposed to fascism here in Massachusetts. We have families that are living in fear that, you know, they're human beings and they should, we have courts, we should deal with it that way. People should not be picked up, put into vehicles like they're kidnapped by unidentified people. I just want to encourage people. I went to hear a rabbi speak, Rabbi Gendor spoke at the temple about 15 years ago and he held this book up, it's called From Dictatorship to Democracy by Gene Sharp. And he said, "This book is used all over the world. Wherever people are under a dictatorial rule, they use this book." It's a how-to get out from under a dictatorship. So I just hope everybody gets a hold of one of these books and reads it. I also have the Berkshire Eagle here. I encourage you to read Berkshire Eagle. It's important for us to have a free press. And so I, just one other book that I hope you will read is On Tyranny by Timothy Snyder, Twenty Lessons from the Twentieth Century. Thank you.
Okay, sir, your time is up. Name an address for the record.
My name is Justin Timney, I live at 86 Cleveland Ave., North Adams. I am here to speak because of the thing Dr. May is bringing upon us.
Can you speak up a bit, please?
Yep. So I want to say that I stand against an authoritative government and anything in the form of an American monarch. I believe in the Constitution and our rights as human beings and against this tyranny that's unfolding right in front of us. And I ask you to support the solution that he presents forth. Thank you.
Please step up to the mic and name an address for the record.
Yes, hi, my name's Krista Tenari and I live at 64 Frederick Street in North Adams and I also want to speak to the same resolution. And I want to say that I support this resolution because at this moment in time, we're called to make a critical decision which could alter the freedoms and rights for the residents of this town and the freedoms that we currently enjoy. And the choice that we face is to either stand by and be compliant or step up and do what we feel is right as Americans. And I feel that, you know, we have protections under the rule of law that are granted to us from the United States Constitution. And these rights are currently being threatened and I can say for myself, I will not pledge any allegiance to any king in the United States of America, but I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. And of course, we just said the pledge of allegiance to our flag and it really stands for the rights and freedoms that we enjoy, which have to do with the shared principles of a participatory democracy. And I feel really, really strongly about that. So the strength, integrity, and actions of this local body are impacted by our federal government and the current policies, actions, and direction it has taken because of funding and policies and all the rest of it. So I urge you to support this resolution which would illegally, because we're looking at a situation where there's, they're trying to concentrate power illegally in the hands of one person who's a self-appointed leader, which would strip us of our right to a representative government, which I feel is a concern to everyone as Americans and especially local bodies, local politicians, which also impact the community agencies which currently serve the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please step up to the mic and name an address for the record. You can use either mic.
Hi, Eric Robb, I live in 100th Street. Last week on the way back to North Adams, I passed through Williamstown, it was raining. There were a dozen protesters holding banners up and I made a cynical remark to Bobby like, "You think they're going to change Washington because of this?" And I felt this way 60-odd years ago when my late sister urged me to go to a civil rights march in Washington DC, the famous one with Martin Luther King saying, "I have a dream" speech. A few years later, living in Washington, I went to a couple of Vietnam marches and I had the same feeling, you know, what difference do I make, one person? But you know, I bet you half a million people have the same idea, but half a million people made a difference. It changed history. You know, I've been an activist in North Adams about fields and art and local issues and I'm sure you guys want to deal with nuts and bolts of North Adams and our national concerns, but you know, there's two questions you need to ask. One is, does it make a difference? Well, times 10, times 100, times 10,000, it can make a difference. The other question is whether this issue is so important that you have to address it. It might seem like a faraway abstract concern, but will the attacks on Harvard affect MCL A or Williams? Will it affect foreign students here? Will it curtail free speech? Will the removal of programs authorized by Congress but now removed by the direction of one person, remove the safety nets from our disadvantaged residents? Will freedom in the arts be threatened? Already two grants to mass mocha have been removed. And how many residents must get hauled away without due process before we say enough is enough? I think we might have, we've already hit the threshold and if you don't believe it, then tell me where that threshold should be drawn. I think the people standing outside in the rain in Williamstown and the people supporting this resolution are simply saying to you, "You must stand by and watch."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody that has anything else to share with us on the agenda tonight?
Hi, I'm Virginia Mew, I live at 36 Holden Street and I, first of all, want to support everything that's just been said about Peter May's resolution and I hope you all will vote for it. My larger topic is around the budget. I have been asking that the council and mayor have a public hearing which would be more accessible to the citizens of North Adams than trying to go to five individual finance committee meetings over two weeks. That's not a realistic way to bring the community together to have a conversation about the budget. So I suggested a town hall. I have confidence in the mayor, seen her. I was thinking about the bond issue and the many open meetings that were held for that and how valuable and productive those were about communicating information, giving people the opportunity to ask their questions and being engaged. I'm asking us to repeat that process so that the people who are paying the taxes that fund the city can get the information in a way that is practical. If we're committed to democracy and dialogue, then we need to create the opportunities for citizens to participate, talk to us, ask us questions, and in some cases, disagree. And that happens best in, I think, open forum. So I feel that a petition should not be necessary. I think this should be something that our government would want to do and when it was asked, be receptive to doing. And the only reason I did the petition was because I was told that it would not be done. So I, I hope that then, oh, okay. So I hope we'll find a way to get to have the kind of meeting that people can come to and be practical in their lives and have an honest dialogue.
And your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Fernsworth, 244 East Main Street. And while I support everything that's been said, I am actually here today as a trustee of the North Adams Public Library. I know you guys are discussing and voting on the repair of the Belvedere and I know it's expensive, but the library is probably one of the, one of the most important foundations of democracy and it's hard to deal with the expense of a building. I'd rather buy more books, but I look forward to the hopefully creative solutions that you all have. I know this is a very difficult thing to figure out, but I just wanted to support that and you guys for what you're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on. Okay, without objection, I'm going to be moving council paper number 12,500, Communication from President Sapienza requesting time for Zachary Duma from General Code to provide a presentation on the agreement and process for codification of the ordinances, which has been signed off on to be completed, starting within the signing in this fiscal year and will continue over the next two fiscal years. And I'm going to file the communication. And I will read the communication. Honorable council members, I am requesting time for Zachary Duma, our account manager with General Code, to provide a presentation to the council in regards to our signed proposal for the codification which will take place over the next couple of fiscal years. The city clerk has included as an attachment the following documents for your information: payment schedule and project deliverables, proposal for codification services including an executive summary, General Code's approach to codification, General Code's recommended solutions and process, project materials, investment details and options, performance and payment schedule, additional online services, and the authorization and agreement. As we all realize, the city of North Adams has never completed this process for our ordinances. Mr. Duma will utilize other cities in Massachusetts with General Code has completed their codification as examples to walk us through the process. He will also discuss the importance of setting up a good codification committee with key people. I thank you for your consideration and the welcome of Zachary Duma. Mr. Duma, would you like to step up, please?
Good evening, folks. Can you hear me okay? Perfect. My name is Zachary Duma, I work for General Code. We are a municipal codifier. We've been serving the city of North Adams for at least the last 40 years and have helped you over that time maintain your municipal code, but obviously based on the contents of Mr. Sapienza's letter, we feel that there's a certain revitalization work that should be occurring. And I'm very happy to be back here tonight. Some of you may remember, I was actually here in September of 2023. It's a little scary to think about how much time has passed since then, but I'm very happy that we are here tonight to talk about the code project. Is there anywhere that you'd like me to start specifically? Would you like me to give you some background?
Not wherever you feel comfortable starting. Maybe just an overview of the whole process and then any details that you can provide us?
Yeah, absolutely. So actually, I'm going to grab a prop real quick. So in case you're not familiar with what a city code is, it is your collection of laws, rules, and regulations that govern how your city or town or other form of government should operate. And it looks a little something like this. Nice big codebook, usually filled with way too much legislation, but it should serve as the guiding principles for how you operate your community day in, day out. A code can represent your general ordinances, whether it's regulations governing council operations, zoning, dog licensing, anything in between. Basically, a municipal code is the composition of anything that carries the legal force and effect of law, kind of like a state statute book, but more tailored to what you need on your day-to-day here in North Adams. As a municipal codifier, General Code has been helping communities for about 68 years now. We started out in Rochester, New York, we worked all the way over to Massachusetts, probably about 50 years or so ago. And as of Thursday last week, we have 154 Massachusetts codes online just in this one state. Across New England where I serve, we have just under 300 and we're building about 40 or so. Across the rest of the United States, we have about eight or nine other representatives, such as myself, that help serve communities locally across, whether it's Texas, California, Pennsylvania, so we're a little bit of everywhere. And because of that, we get to see how governments operate, sometimes really well, sometimes not so well. So with codification, what we do at the initial outset is we bring together other outstanding ordinances, regulations, and so forth, and we build an initial code structure. Once we have that structure built, we then perform a substantive review, give you areas where we can improve, modernize, adapt, and basically realign things with the current state. And then we move on to publication and then eventually we get to the point where North Adams is at, where the code's been online for a period of time and we need to shake it loose a lot of mothballs and start over again. So the project we're presenting is a recodification. Your recodification is designed in such a manner that the first phase of the project will be the performance of an editorial and legal review. There's a substantive review, we'll look at every single item in your code as exists today, as well as several outstanding items that your city clerk will be sending to me over the next week or so. We're going to make sure that everything that you have under the book is compliant with Mass state law. We're also going to make sure that anything that is currently enforcing your code can, does not conflict or overlap anything else that's pre-existing. It's very common over time, and I did a little bit of looking at your code, I think the last time you guys did anything significant was 1964? Well, about 61 years, but what happens very frequently is, you know, in 1970, we might adopt a dog licensing ordinance and in 1980, we'll do it again, 1990, and 2010. Next thing you know, the original ones are never repealed, so they have conflicting language with the one that's currently being enforced and that can create problems, can create errors for enforcement for your code officer and, you know, if the city gets sued, it doesn't look good. So as a part of that editorial and legal review, we're going to look for every single thing that we can find that might be out of alignment, might be a little bit askew, and we're going to come back to the city and say, "Hey, we found XYZ issue, how do we like to best correct that?" As a part of that substantive review, we're going to provide you with our best recommended course of action for how you can modernize and update based on our experience in the Commonwealth and then also outside in our other communities. And where we can, we'll pull up examples or model legislation to say, you know, for example, like the MBTA law, that's a big zoning item. As more communities are starting to adopt the MBTA requirement, we're now looking to say, "Hey, look, here are some other communities have done it. Here are some ways that you might be able to adapt." Do I have to step in?
Look, I'm going to get a little...
This is my chair, not my bed. I'm going to swap this out. I apologize.
It's okay.
Sorry, I got to figure out where I was.
MBTA communities.
Thank you, thank you. It's why I like having a crowd. So yeah, we're going to figure out our best recommendations, we're going to present that to the city council and say, "Hey, here are all the areas where there's a little bit of deficiency, a little bit of, you know, you're out of alignment with the state and how you can modernize and update and improve your code." Once you've worked through that editorial and legal analysis, you'll also find that we're going to look for ways that we can improve the current structure of the code. I think one of the more, this is my terminology, but one of the more egregious things that I see in your code is you have some awkward chapter numbering. So your zoning chapter is Chapter Z. It's with the code, but it's not really in the code. You still use sequential numbering, so Chapter 24, 25, 26, 27, 27A, which I really don't like because it, it makes it a little bit hard to add and develop your code over time. So we're going to give you some ways that we can restructure your code, clean it up, and hopefully make it easier to read and navigate. And so that 10, 15, 20 years from now, as you add new subject matters, you can easily incorporate new chapters into the code without breaking or adversely affecting the rest of the municipal code. That substantive review is probably going to take us about six to seven months. The town, sorry, city is going to have at least 100 business days to go through and review everything. For a community of your size, we'll just put it out there, you're probably going to go over that 100 days. That's okay. Just let us know, we'll give you more time. As you work through that review, you might find that there are going to be questions that require some real hard answers, some real thorough discussion. The good news is, is that we're not going to break anything, so long as you're thinking through ways to do it or address it, whether it's, you know, through a localized committee involving some members of the public or just something that the city council does, you're going to have a sandbox environment where you're able to go through and give us all your feedback and all the ways that you want to improve upon your code and redevelop it so that when it is time for us to get to the drafting stages, you're going to have a very nice, clean copy of your new ordinances, you're going to have a very nice, clean copy of your new zoning regulations, and eventually it'll come back to the city council for adoption and rep publication. Once this whole process is done, the current Ecode 360 website, which is where the municipal code is hosted, will be re-uploaded. The current iteration will go into a digital archive held privately on, for the city council to review if in the future it's ever needed. But the public will have access to the current laws that are actively being enforced that you folks will then be developing and continuing to grow upon, so it'll remain that dedicated public resource. It'll just look a little bit different when it's all said and done. And I believe you're going to get about five new codebooks, thereabouts. If you're thinking, "Hey, I want a codebook, too," no, you don't. They're very heavy, they're a little bit cumbersome. We recommend one for the clerk's office, one for the vault, and then a couple to float around the city as needed. That's a lot of work in about five or six minutes. How are we feeling so far? Did I lose anybody? Counselors, any questions? Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor Fitch?
Yes, yeah, through the chair. I'd just be curious, actually, through the chair to the city clerk, I'd just be curious to hear what the city clerk has to say about this and also curious what the list would look like on our end bandwidth-wise, you know, from your office.
Not quite sure about the second part of your question. However, I can tell you that this is going to be a fabulous process. It's going to be important that we put a good team of people together because it's going to be over two more fiscal years. Our first payment's going to go out in this fiscal year so that General Code can start the process. It'll be next fiscal year before we're getting information from General Code and working on it. So it's, it's going to be a process that's going to take probably 24 months at least, but we're going to end up with our code where we need it to be. And that's important because we're running into, in kind of spinning wheels a lot of times because fixing issues within the code, this is going to put it where it needs to be. So that is going to be really good for the city.
And regarding the bandwidth question, what I meant is, is this going to suck up a lot of your office's time in doing it?
So I think it's going to be important for my office to be a part of the process because we are, I'm the person that's going to be going in between.
Right.
So it's going to be important to be a part of that. I know that usually when that process is being done, the clerk or the clerk's office is in that meeting as well to ensure that the proper information is going back and forth. And that is going to be a very important pivotal part of getting things done and getting them done in a good manner, in a, you know, smooth manner.
I'm going to add to that a little bit and then I'll take Counselor Shade's question. What I'm going to suggest to whoever the next president is, because I will not be president in the next term, is that an ad hoc committee be formed, including the city clerk, so that when these things come down from General Code, they can be reviewed, such as we do either through our general government committee or an ad hoc committee set up specifically for the codification process. So I'm going to suggest either one of those two ways and that won't happen until the new term. Counselor Shade?
Thank you. First, thank you for coming again. It's great to see you. This is a process that I'm extremely excited about. We've been talking about this for about two years now. We're finally getting this off the ground. This is going to create two very, very important things for the people of North Adams. One, it's going to create a code that is transparent, and two, that is much easier to access. It's important that people know what laws they have to follow. And if you try to search for them now in our code, it's a mess. You find conflicts everywhere. We fixed an issue a few months ago where we had two different noise ordinances because one was in zoning, one was in the code, and we got rid of both of them because they conflicted with each other. We're going to find a lot of that through this process and that's why this is so important. We want to bring everything up to date, we want to make sure that it aligns with Mass general law, with our own ordinances, and that everything is transparent and easily accessible. That's what it means to the taxpayers, that's what it means to the people of North Adams for us to do this, and I can't wait to get started.
Thank you. Counselor Blackmer?
The price on the back here, the 19540, is that the total price?
That is the total price of the project from start to finish. The only time that price may waver is if you folks come back and say, "Hey, we repealed all of our zoning, here's a brand-new zoning, figure out how to fit it in." Probably unlikely, which is why the city clerk has been so diligent in getting things over to us over the last year or so. So what you see is what you're going to pay. If at any point during the project there are changes or questions, we're going to communicate that directly to the clerk so you folks will have the ability to weigh in before any additional invoice is come.
So about 19,000 is spread over in three different payments through three different years?
Spread over four, five payments.
Three fiscal years.
And depending on how quickly you move, it might be two fiscal years or it might be...
be three fiscal years. We see some communities where they surprisingly can knock out this process in 18 months. It only requires two fiscal years. We have other communities that they take that full 24 months, because that's what they need. Depending on where they land in the fiscal year when they start, you know, it might kick over into the third.
Through the chair to the mayor, has this all been worked into the budget and on any kind of future planning for expenditures?
Thank you.
Counselor Bona?
Through the chair. One thing I'm going to guess that probably you can't pick up is, for example, if there are things in the codes that we continually find, or, for example, streets that are obsolete and positions that are not there, like, you wouldn't know, right? So you're not going to probably be able to catch those. But will you be comparing the whole code to, for example, MGL?
Yes. Yeah, so our, we have three editors that are dedicated to Massachusetts specifically, and because of that, they have come to know the MGLs very thoroughly, especially when new changes have sprung upon us. So typically, what we recommend is if you have a list of known issues or concerns, please send those to your clerk now, so when we do have our code project team come together and reach out and say, hey, let's get this thing kicked off, your clerk can say, here are 30 pages of stuff that the council has found, that citizens have reported, that our planner doesn't like. How can we work through this? And that way there, we can pay special attention to those unique items that we might not necessarily know, because we're not living here every day. When we go through the MGLs, we're going to look at the code the way it's written currently. We're going to look at the statute as it's written. And then if there's any prevailing case law that we might need to be aware of, our team will go through and do the research and come back to you. Everything that we provide is going to be given to you on a specialized version of Ecode 360. It more or less looks exactly like the current city code site, except it's a very ugly purple color. That's how you know it's the private site, and you'll work through everything there. And then depending on how much or how little we find on each different subject, we'll be able to advise you what our best recommendations are. The editor is going to try to guide you through the process as best as possible.
And then, if I could continue, how at the end does the council vote on this? Does it come in as one big boat, or is it broken down into...
A city council form of government? Typically, yes, it's about one or two ordinances, depending on how we do it. Some communities like a hard repeal, so it's an ordinance that says, we're going to repeal everything as of today back, and now adopt everything today forward. There's your new code. Other communities will use what we call a fuzzy repeal. So the ordinance will be written in such a way that it's going to list the items that are currently being updated, but it's also going to identify the fact that some of the pre-existing might still stay the same. It's going to depend on what the final draft of your code looks like and how much or how little changes. I'm assuming quite a bit's going to update and modernize, but we are going to draft that adoptive language for you, so you folks don't have to worry about that. If you have a city solicitor, we can work in conjunction with them. But you're going to have at least two draft phases where you're going to see everything that we've incorporated following the city's response to the analysis, and then a final draft that has everything dotted, you know, Ts crossed and whatnot, before you actually come to city council. The hope is that if you folks work with a codification committee or maybe an ordinance review committee, you'll be able to hash out a lot of those thoughts, concerns, and questions in committee, so by the time it comes to the city council, everybody understands how much or how little has changed and what it's going to mean for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. I believe the last time you came, when you gave us a presentation, you had mentioned that our city's code ordinances is currently about three times bigger than most municipalities' are in size?
You folks, only having about 12,000 residents, have a significant municipal code. It's not uncommon for cities to have large codes, but being out here in the Berkshires, you guys have a lot of legislation compared to some of your resident communities, neighboring communities.
And through this process, we would probably be able to find duplication and all of that and kind of reduce that down...
Most likely.
...to simplify and make sure that everything pertaining to a particular subject is in one place rather than in five different sections.
Exactly. So, you know, for example, the total page count might not necessarily go down, but the actual format and layout should be improved significantly. So, you know, if we look at Chapters 27 and 27A, you have a dog regulations and then a cat regulations. Most communities have one animals' chapter that includes everything animal-related, all in one spot. So I don't have to go through and look for the chapter on Go, to the chapter on, you know, foul or whatever. Your code's unique. But we're going to go through, we're going to fix it.
Counselor Blackmore?
I just want to clarify. I mean, you talk about communities of like size. Most communities of like size are towns. They have bylaws, their government and how they do their laws, and they go by the town meeting book, and they go by the selectmen's handbook, and they, they do things a little differently. Cities, I think you need to compare us to other small cities, not other, not other towns. I mean, yeah, we're a lot like Ethel and Orange, but governing-wise, it's different.
Yeah, no, and I apologize for the change in terminology. I respect the fact that towns operate a little bit more complex than cities do, let's be honest. Where cities are more straightforward, you can address things, you know, at one meeting as opposed to having to wait six or 12 months to go to town meeting. You folks are about 12,000 people in a city. We have a couple of communities across Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts that are smaller cities. You have a 450-page municipal code. It's, it's a big code. It's certainly not the biggest, though. There's some good news there. But we'll go through, we're going to try to make this process as simple as possible so the council is well-supported, that you folks know exactly what's happening, and that if there are questions, you have a dedicated contact person that you can get real answers from, instead of sending an email and waiting six months for something to come back.
Okay, counselors, any more questions for Mr. Dumont? Mr. Dumont, I thank you very much for coming out here tonight, and appreciate your, your help, and we look forward to working with you.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 11,646-D. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion that we postpone this to the next meeting, and the reason being is that when we tried to place the ads with the Berkshire Eagle, they weren't able to put them in publication until this past Thursday. That does not give us enough time. This past, yeah.
I rescind my motion. Move to continue to the meeting of June 10th.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of June 10th.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, Counselor Bona?
Yeah, just quickly, they weren't able to publish it because...
Go ahead.
They did not have the ability to get it in before. The dates were blocked out. I even called our representative, and they, I'm assuming they just had, I know that there were town elections and stuff going on, so I don't know. I'm assuming there was a bunch. I've never had a problem getting a legal notice in, but when I was trying, I had a whole bunch of dates that were grayed out, you couldn't even get it in. So, and when I called to see if it was possible to get it before that, I was told there was no possible way, so.
Thank you.
And I do see the print edition of the Eagle, and it did, it did seem to have a lot of ads from a lot of the towns surrounding the area. And there was, most likely, in my opinion, it was probably a capacity issue. They did not have the room to publish our information at that time. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Council Paper Number 12,393-D. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, proposed, postponed to the meeting of May 27, 2025. Do we have a motion?
A motion to postpone to, I would say, the second meeting in April. I'm sorry, in June.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in June.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Blackmore?
Do you have an update?
The only update I have right now is I have some conflicting information from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we still need to contact either Mass DOT or our solicitor to find out the legalities of some of the implications of instituting a school zone in the area that we want, particularly the McCann Vocational High School area. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Council Paper Number 12,469-D. A Communication from President Sapienza Representing Additional Updates to Ordinance Paper Number 12,469, Chapter 27, Dog Regulations, Sections 4 and 8, Updating Gender-Specific Language. I'm going to file the communication. And dear fellow counselors, at our May 20 public safety meeting, the committee voted to make additional changes to the language in our ordinances, Chapter 27, entitled Dog Regulations. These changes were in addition to the changes proposed to us by Mayor Maxi on Council Paper Number 12,469. 12,469 was to establish an Animal Control Commission. The additional amendment to Chapter 27 will be to remove gender-specific language and to remove the reference to the Public Safety Director. The proposed changes will now refer to as there and refer to the chief of police. And then is asked for a member of the Public Safety Committee to make a motion to amend the ordinance as recommended by the committee. And I get a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
You need to move on to the actual ordinance.
Yeah.
Move on to that, yeah. I'm jumping ahead of myself here. Okay, Council Paper Number 12,469.
Wait. Should we pass to a second reading and publish as required by law and then have a discussion, including the amendment?
We can do that, yeah, let's do that.
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Okay, discussion.
Who was on Public Safety that can make the amendment? Me or Pete?
Counselor Bona? Yep.
I'm making a motion just to amend the ordinance.
Okay.
A motion to amend the ordinance as recommended by the committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the ordinance as recommended by the committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on that?
On the amendment.
On the amendment? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto the main thing. We have a motion to publish and publish as required by law and pass to a second reading as amended. Do we have a second?
We have.
We already have it.
We have a second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper Number 12. Okay, so we've already covered that, yeah. Council Paper Number 12,470. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 22, Section 1, 24, Regarding Submission of the Capital Improvement Plan, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law.
Move to adopt.
We have to postpone on this one. We also ran into the same issue that we ran into on the...
I rescind my motion and make a motion to continue till the meeting of June 10th.
Second.
A motion and a second to postpone. And that was June 10th?
Yep. First meeting in June.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The copy of the ad that appeared in last Thursday's Berkshire Eagle, yeah, all of them should be in your packages. So they were published, they were just published late. And we're going to run into the same situation with Council Paper Number 12,471. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix Z. Zoning Regarding the Addition of Accessory Doorling Units, Referred to the Planning Board for the Joint Meeting with a Return Date of May 27, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So we need a motion to postpone, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. There's not.
We haven't, we haven't published it.
Oh, we haven't, I'm sorry, okay.
It has to pass to a second.
Gotcha. Okay, all right.
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, just to get it on the table.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Blackmore?
I know there's discussion at the planning board, and, and I agree, there's some of us who didn't agree with the way it's written. Somebody can build an ADU, live in the ADU, and Airbnb or short-term rental their house, but they can't live in their house and short-term rental their ADU. And so that seems a little conflicting. Also, I know that there's been a preponderance of, a lot of people were short-term renting their house, if that's even a word, and, and everybody was worried about it, but there seems to be a little bit, a lot of them, I think we got oversaturated in the market, and now what they're running into is more of these properties are actually going back on the rental market and out of the short-term rental. So I just, I don't like telling people what to do with their property.
We have a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'll abstain.
Want abstention?
No, no.
You or an a?
I'm an a.
Thank you.
I would clarify, it's not because I don't agree with ADUs, it's because I don't agree with that particular provision.
Council Paper Number 12,476. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 20, 26, Human Service Commission, 29, North Adams Commission on Disabilities, 33, North Adams Youth Commission, 36, North Adams IDEA Commission, 34, North Adams Public Arts Commission, Chapter 26, Mobile Home Park Rent Control Board, and Chapter 28, Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art and Cultural Development Commission, Section 28 dash 2, Appointment Terms and Vacancies, Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law. This falls under the delay of the Berkshire Eagle. We will need a motion to postpone.
Move to postpone to the first meeting in June, June 10th.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,481. An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Creating a New Affordable Housing Trust, Under Chapter 2, Article 30, 37, Referred to the General Government and to be reviewed by the city solicitor with a return date of May 27, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to postpone to the first meeting of July, which is July 8th.
Postpone July 8th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, Counselor Fitch?
Yes, just that this hasn't been able to make it onto the general government agenda yet, but I believe that this will provide enough time, especially with us going through the budget. the budget season right now, in order to take the time that I think that this needs dedicated to it. So I feel comfortable with that date if everybody else does.
Okay. Counsel Shade, you had your hand up?
Yeah, has this been reviewed by the city solicitor yet?
I believe that the process was going to be, it would go to general government and then we would send that to the city solicitor.
Okay.
Counsel Blackmore?
Well, I have a question too. I mean, I realize that Housing Trust might be different, but I, is it, basically, the composition of the Board of Trustees includes a mayor, they're designate a member of the North Adams City Council appointed by the council president, one member of the Community Development Board, appointed by the mayor, subject to city council approval. Are we going to run into this whole charter issue again, or does the trust make, does the Housing Trust make it different, and if so, we need that as part of our legal opinion, and maybe a couple of legal opinions, like maybe reach out to the AG's office first, because they're free too.
Counsel Shade?
Yeah, with that, I would think that a trust is different than a Board of Commission based on the language of a trust in itself, so that's something we would definitely want a solicitor's opinion on.
I'd want the AG first.
Agreed.
Because the AG won't contradict our attorney.
So let's postpone, we should table it.
No, we can postpone it till July, we can get into it. Don't worry about it, we'll postpone it again. Sorry.
Spin the wheel.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council paper number 12,487, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix D, Section D-6, Police Department Fees and Fines for Parking Permits and Passes, passed to a second reading and published as required by law. Again, this was due, published late because of the Eagle situation. Do we have a motion?
Move to postpone to the meeting of June 10th.
Second.
Postpone to June 10th.
Bring snacks.
Discussion, Counsel Shade?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend before it gets published.
Okay.
I'd like to amend it so that there is a one-day parking pass for $5, because this charges a parking pass of $15 for three days and does not allow somebody to buy just a one-night overnight parking pass.
This has already been published?
I thought it wasn't published.
No, it was published, but it was published late.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then why are we postponing if it was published?
Because it hasn't got enough.
You have to.
It was published, but it was published late. It wasn't published within the 10 days it needs to be brought before the council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of June 10th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nine.
Oh, shoot, actually a a.
Okay, so we have two nays, Counsel Bona and Counsel Shade.
I'm postponing it?
I don't support it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, but, well, okay.
It's going to get published.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just got sidetracked for a minute. This one, I am in abstention because I am a City Lot customer.
Okay, but does that really matter if you're just, we're just postponing it?
I know, but I was in abstention throughout the whole process, so I believe I should still be.
Okay, so we have one abstention from Counsel.
So we don't have six members there?
No, we don't.
Okay.
To postpone, we don't need it.
Do you wish to keep your name vote?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
For clarification too, have you gotten a ruling on that, or is that just something? I mean, I know you have a parking pass.
I pay for a parking pass, so I don't believe I should be part of the process of voting for or against an increase.
Okay. You said you get parking tickets, do I not vote on the parking fines?
All right. Let's move on. Council paper number 12,490, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 22, Capital Outlay Program.
Move to adopt.
Section 123 entitled Submission by Mayor to Counsel, passed to a second reading and published as required by law. We need to postpone that because that was also involved in that delay by the Eagle.
Move to postpone till the June 10th meeting.
Second.
I know, it's going to be.
All right, any discussion? Counsel Shade, uh, Blackmore?
In the future, when we have something like that, can we put that note into the agenda? Like, know that it wasn't published, so that we won't be wasting our time making motions that we then have to rescind.
We will do that next time.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it won't be next time.
Hopefully, there won't be a next time, but there's always holidays and staff issues, so.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of June 10th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council paper number 12,493, an order to revise all borrowing orders to include specific provisions to allow the city to issue qualified bonds to the Commonwealth, passed to a second reading and published as required by law. Again.
Let me guess.
We need to postpone this.
Move to postpone to the first meeting of June, June 10th.
Second.
Okay, motion to postpone to June 10th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council paper number 12,495, Communication Number 108 from Mayor Maxey announcing the reappointment of Rosemary Dickinson to serve as a member of the Board of License Commission for a term to expire June 1, 2031, and the reappointment of Kyle Hanlon to serve as a member of the Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire June 1, 2030. And Mayor, would you like to read your communication, please?
Sure, basically, President Sapienza, you did, I'm very excited that Mrs. Dickinson and Mr. Hanlon have accepted the reappointment. These are both reappointments, they've been longstanding commission members, so thank you. I just want to publicly acknowledge Rosemary Dickinson and Kyle Hanlon for their continued service to the City of North Adams, and as a joke, I'd like to postpone this to June 10.
Postpone it to whenever you like.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
Let's persevere.
That's a good one.
That was good, I'll give you that.
Chairman. Counsel Shade?
Yes, and through the chair, to the mayor, in the future with these appointments, can you also include a list of vacancies so people know what's open?
Yes, we were working on that list, but budget took over.
Of course.
If you're not in Excel spreadsheet, I don't know what you are this week.
Of course. Thank you.
Council paper number 12,496, Communication 109 from Mayor Maxey presenting an order to transfer $200,000 from the Carity North Adams Public Library Fund and an additional appropriation of $208,500 for the La Library Belvedere project. I'll follow the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak, please?
Absolutely. I believe I started my career with the city in 1992, and at that time we evaluated the Belvedere, so that's how long this project has been kicking around. We were fortunate with the help of Counsel Green and his wife to apply for an historic grant for the library, which we received in the amount of $75,000. Unfortunately, because of some bidding constraints, some engineering and the review of the historical society, we can't spend the money by June 30. We tried, Maria Kozak, my administrative officer, tried everything possible to get an extension, but Mass Historic, as we know, is very tough. So with that, I went to Maria and I spoke to the trustees there. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and we didn't want to put this project off another year. So the trustees of the library graciously are willing to work with the city and take about $200,000 from the Gail and Carity account, which was left to us in Gail's will, to keep the library going, upkeep operations, and the Belvedere was always a project that Gail wanted to see done. So with that, I had the $200,000 in hand, but I didn't have the balance. So we thought that we could easily afford to do a BAN for the next five years with some short interest, and then explore the possibility again of reapplying for the historic preservation grant. They will welcome our opportunity to apply again. However, at this time, as we know with the cost of construction, we feel that the bid from La Rochelle is a solid bid. It's going to seal up that building, that portion of the building, as well as remove some asbestos, and get that all secured and looking good on our historic building. As I said earlier, you know, it would be great to utilize the $75,000, but at this time, we cannot spend it. Our contractor cannot mobilize by then, and if we kick it down the road anymore, I'm just afraid what pricing will be. So with that, I'm before you for two reasons. One, to ask for the transfer out of the Carity Fund, which has been supported by the library trustees, and then secondly, to allow us to issue a BAN, a short-term note, in the balance of roughly $209,000.
Thank you. Council paper number 12,496-1, an order to transfer $200,000 from the Carity North Adams Public Library Fund to support the Library Belvedere Project at 74 Church Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, second. Any discussion? Counselor Green?
Through the president, to the mayor, you mentioned asbestos, which I know is another project there. Is there any other roofing projects that are attached to where the Belvedere is that we need to look at? You know, as they do this work, some of the roof work adjacent?
Yeah, I can't speak to that fully until they open it up and see what's there. The roof on our side going up East Main Street is fairly new. It would be what's facing Church Street.
Church Street, yeah.
We did an assessment, and there were only hot areas in certain areas, and that's what the bid was based on for the asbestos abatement. But like with any old building, you don't really know until you open it up, but we're confident that it, the area that we're working in, our bid contains and can take care of that area.
So it wouldn't be built over here and then right next to it have some problems?
The areas that were evaluated.
Wiggle room with money in case this beam comes out or that, you know?
We'll have to see when we get into it, but the area that was evaluated, some of them were hot, some of them were not for asbestos, so we feel the area that this project addresses, we've.
We're in good shape.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
But you never know when you open something.
I know, that's what I'm worried about, that.
Yeah. Thank you for your question.
Counsel Blackmore?
I want to thank Counsel Green for trying to get the grant and for Administrative Officer Kozak for the work that she did trying to get us the money, and even if we didn't get the cooperation we needed, but thanks for the effort.
Any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Aluskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
ATEAs.
Okay, motion passes. Council paper number 12,496. I'm sorry? Counsel Shade?
Yes, just a quick question, through the chair, to the mayor. Do you know what the remaining balance of that fund would be after the transfer?
Yes, 308 minus 200, $108,000.
Thank you.
Proceeds, still, interest still coming.
Thank you. Council paper number 12,496-2, an order to authorize a bond appropriation in the amount of $208,500 for capital improvement costs to the Library Belvedere at 74 Church Street.
Move to adopt.
Okay. Motion to adopt. And we have a second?
Yep, second.
Second, okay. All right, I will read the order into.
Chair.
Well, read the order first.
Okay. Be ordered that the city appropriate the amount of $200,8500 for the purpose of paying cost to making capital improvements to the Library Belvedere located at 74 Church Street, including without limitation the design, construction, reconstruction, and rehabilitation thereof, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 7, Chapter 1. I believe that's correct. Or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and to take any other action relative thereto, and further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under MGL, Chapter 44A, any and all bonds of the city are authorized to be borrowed pursuant to this loan order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith. This will be, any further discussion? Counsel Shade?
Yes, first, does this need to be published? I think this needs to be published.
It's a borrowing.
Before we can vote.
It's a borrowing letter, yeah.
Because of.
So we need to publish, yes. Thank you.
But not on June 10.
I'm sorry, so move to pass to second reading and publish as required by law?
Second.
Okay. And this is a roll call vote.
Chair.
Sorry.
Counsel Shade?
Thank you. Through the chair, to the mayor. With this project, do we have an estimated time for construction of how long the project might take?
Yeah, we're hoping that we'll have it buttoned up by November 1st.
Of this year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bona?
Follow-up question to that, through the chair, to the mayor. When would the construction start?
Probably end of July, early August. You may see them mobilizing. They're on another job, and then once they're done with that, they're coming to us. Going back to the grant, we tried to, you know, write off some for mobilization, but it didn't quite work. Construction actually had to be started, and we really want to work with La Rochelle, so they'll be coming soon.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Fitch?
Yes, also through the chair, to the mayor. In our last Community Development Committee meeting we held in the public library, so we already heard some updates from them, but it was my understanding, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that there will be some scaffolding through the summer season, right? That the library will still be accessible and still in full use.
Correct.
Sounds great, thank you.
Wear your hat hat.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done. This will be a roll call vote.
Point of view?
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
This is now a motion to publish, so we shouldn't need a roll call vote to publish?
Okay.
We need it on the adoption, yeah, the next meeting.
Okay, we will do it next meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing not. Council paper number 12,497, Communication Number 110 from Mayor Maxey presenting the draft fiscal year '26 Classification and Compensation Plan for Referral to the Finance Committee. I will file the communication and turn it over to the mayor.
Great, thank you, President Sapienza. I persevered all week and worked hard on the budget. So to keep this moving, before you, is that, is exactly that, is a draft of our fiscal year '26 budget with corresponding changes to the Classification and Compensation Plan. At this time, I would respectfully request that it get referred to the Finance Committee to do a deep dive, starting tomorrow, Wednesday, May 28. We're going to review the school budgets, both the vocational school as well as the public schools, the comp plan, and start general government as time permits. We will also have another public hearing. We're trying something new this year to try to get more people involved on Sunday, June 1 at 4:00 PM, followed by another Finance Committee meeting on Monday, June 2, and then on Wednesday, June 4, as well as a whole time on Monday, June 9, if we need more time. Those meetings are all open to the public. We hope that people will come and join us and actively participate in the conversation. That is our budget schedule for right now. I know Ms. Reel has put forth a petition about a public hearing. That is totally at the council's pleasure. I'll be happy to defend my budget anywhere, anytime, to anyone. I'll be happy to defend my budget anywhere, anytime, to anyone. But just keep in mind, this is a working draft for both items, the Compensation Classification Plan as well as the budget. My team is still really scraping through, but there are some really hard costs in there that we can't control, i.e. health insurance, the Housak Water Quality District. We need to give our people a good wage. So there's a lot of things in the budget that look a little off, plus we've invested in our staff. We have some great things to announce in the Community Development Office, so I look forward to having a lively discussion with the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to refer to the, oh wait, do we have the order?
Council Paper Number 12,497, in order to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter 2, Section 27 and 28, with the Fiscal Year 2026 Classification Plan and Compensation Plan Schedule B. Do we have a motion?
Move to refer to the Finance Committee with a return date of June 10th.
Second. Okay, refer to the Finance Committee with a return date of June 10th. Counselor Shade.
Yes, just for the public's awareness, I'm going to repeat those dates again and let you know what we're going to be talking about at each of those meetings. So Wednesday, May 28th, 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers, we'll be discussing the Northern Berkshire Vocational School District at Adams Public Schools. The Compensation Plan, and hopefully we'll have time to start talking about general government. On Sunday, June 1st, we will continue general government, then discuss unclassified debt and interest and capital items. On Monday, June 2nd, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, we'll talk about the Housak Water Quality District and public services. On Wednesday, June 4th, 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, we will discuss public safety. And then again, on Monday, June 9th, if necessary, we have one more meeting where anything else that we don't get to, we will get to there. So I encourage you all to come, please. Your input is very valuable into our budget discussions, and it helps us know where you believe our priorities should lie. So it's always a lively discussion. It's a great way to learn how the city spends your tax money. So if you want to know how your taxes are actually spent in the projects they go towards and what departments, and how the money is used, this is where you learn how that happens. So please come, I encourage you to be there. I will be there for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments? Counsel Blackmer.
Oh, I guess this applies to this one or the finance. I want to reiterate what Counsel Shade said, that this is an opportunity. We've had a lot of input and a lot of questions and answers over the last 10, 12, 15, 18 years regarding different budget items. Some people want to come and they want to talk about the library, so they show up for public services, or they want to talk about the police department, so they show up for public safety. So I think it's engaging, it's been very helpful for us as counselors, but I think it's also beneficial to the public.
Hey, Counsel Fitch?
And I'll just add one more thing. My last year was my first time serving on the, on this particular committee. It's a lot of fun as well, believe it or not. You know, this is like spreadsheets and spreadsheets, but those opportunities to ask questions, as these other counselors have been saying, is really exciting and really interesting. And you get to hear from different city representatives, different city leaders about, you know, answering these questions. So check it out, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Oh, and also, one more thing, through the chair to the city clerk. Am I correct in assuming that all of these will also be recorded and published, and people can attend on Zoom if they need or want to?
All of the meetings are going to be on Zoom, and they'll be on YouTube as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council Paper Number 12,498, Communication Number 111, from Mayor Maxi, presenting the draft Fiscal Year 26 Budget Proposal for referral to the Finance Committee. Mayor, would you like to speak on that, please?
Basically the same spiel that I just had for the prior communication. Everything is in draft mode, and we look forward to discussing it with the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Move to refer to the Finance Committee, never, never mind. Go to the order.
This is the order.
Okay. Move to refer to Finance Committee with a return date of June 10th.
Second.
Okay, refer to Finance Committee with the return to June 10th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,499, a communication from Counselor Shade, requesting up to 10 minutes for Dr. Peter May to speak on a resolution to be presented for the preservation of our Constitution and Republic. And I'm going to file the communication without objection. Counselor Shade, would you like to speak, please?
Actually, I would like Dr. May to be given a microphone and speak when we have the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not Peter May, Peter May, as you can tell. I'm Peter Glazer, and he's asked me to introduce his remarks. It's an honor to speak before you. I appreciate this opportunity. I attended the last meeting, and I really respect the work that you're all doing here. For a huge number of people in this city and in the country as a whole, there's, this is a very scary time, getting scarier by the day. And the President of the United States and his administration want people to be scared. They've said as much, and it's working. They stage aggressive public arrests without justification, they sign executive orders targeting the weakest in our population, and they make illegal deportations. That's just the start. The Congress at the President's behest is passing laws that will take health care and basic needs away from millions of people. SNAP benefits, Medicaid, education are all facing drastic cuts, and North Adams residents will suffer. So of course, people are scared. And when people are scared for their future, scared to speak the truth, scared to engage in peaceful protest, and even scared to go about their daily lives for fear of arrest, when all of that is the case, how public officials such as you represent yourselves to their constituents matters. What you say matters, and matters a lot. Some may argue that resolutions from the City Council have no real meaning, no clout, they're not practical, because resolutions aren't laws, or budgets, or buildings. But I disagree, as do many here tonight, some of whom who spoke before you. The people of North Adams need to be reassured with this resolution that their local leaders do believe in democracy and the rule of law. Don't accept these illegal actions and honor the Constitution of the United States and all it stands for. How awful it is that we need to say these things at all. But given the circumstances, we do and we must. Please support this resolution. Dr. May.
Peter May, 119 Summit Avenue. First, I would like to thank Counselor Ashley Shade for sponsoring this resolution.
Step up to the mic, please.
As someone whose civil rights are currently under direct assault, you have a clear perspective as to the urgency and vital importance of this resolution. When the civil rights of any of us are attacked, the civil rights of all of us are attacked. I'd also like to thank all of you who came out to support this resolution. The proposed resolution reads, "We as elected representatives of the City of North Adams condemn the concept of an American monarch or dictator and any and all policies that undermine our Constitution, the structure and function of our democracy, and the rule of law, both here and across the globe." This resolution is nothing more than an explicit restatement of the Pledge of Allegiance, which we recite at every meeting. This specific recitation is a pledge, a solemn promise, a pledge of allegiance, loyalty, not just to the flag, but to our Constitution and our democratic government, which ensure our freedoms, freedom from the opposition repression by a tyrant or king. Our Constitution and democracy are under attack. We stand at the precipice of tyranny with one foot over the edge. There is no time to balk or pretend that it isn't happening. We are neck-deep in a constitutional crisis. Trump is ignoring court orders, acting outside of and above the law. He is arresting judges and mayors, and in blatant authoritarian mode, he is charging a judge and a Democratic representative with crimes for engaging in illegal official capacities. He is jailing and deporting people without due process to find concentration camps. He is attacking and blackmailing universities, law firms, the media, and corporations. He has alienated Democratic allies and aligned himself with foreign dictators. He is considering doing away with habeas corpus, our right to challenge the legality of federal detention. He said he doesn't know if he has to uphold the Constitution. He is blatantly and illegally using the office of the presidency to enrich himself, taking billions in corporate and crypto bribes for access, accepting a $400 million plane, making hotel deals, and much more. These aren't opinions, these are verifiable facts. All of that more the words and actions of an American dictator, from a man who said he wanted to be a dictator on Day 1, a man who J.D. Vance called America's Hitler. Such high praise earned him the VP slot. I understand that some of you are steadfastly opposed to resolutions because they aren't ordinances, so they carry no weight. But ask our LGBTQ+ community how much weight the resolution declaring North Adams a safe haven for them carries with them. Words alone, even if not ordinances, do carry weight, and the words of people like you, who chose to be community leaders and were elected to represent us, carry even more weight. This isn't a partisan issue. This is about every American citizen's most fundamental civic responsibility, the defense and preservation of our Constitution, our democracy, and the rule of law, let alone basic decency, truth, facts, and morality. So the real question here and now really isn't, do the words of a resolution carry weight for us? They do. But rather, do the words of your Pledge of Allegiance and Oath of Office carry any weight with you? Freedoms taken away by governments are never given back. They are fought and died for. Resolutions like this condemning tyranny are declarations of resistance and independence. Silence is complicity, surrendering our democracy without a whimper. You must see that a lifetime of reciting the Pledge of Allegiance was a lifetime of rehearsals for a call to action for exactly this moment and these circumstances, the day when our Constitution and democracy are threatened, and we, the people, must speak up and act to preserve them. Passing this resolution would tell our community and beyond that North Adams supports our Constitution and democracy that has stood for the past 250 years, a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, in which the law is king, and that we denounce tyranny, in which a man is both king and the law. If you fail to pass it, what are you pledging allegiance to? At the end of the Declaration of Independence, from a time when our founding fathers went all in, I quote, "And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor," end quote. This resolution is a small ask for a symbolic but vitally important statement. Passing it is the least you can do to honor them and those who gave their lives defending our freedom. At this time, please raise your hand, we are asking for you to fulfill your Pledge of Allegiance and Oath of Office by demonstrating your patriotism with both the wisdom and courage to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Council Paper Number 12,499-1, a resolution from Counselor Shade for the preservation of our Constitution and our republic.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Counselor Shade.
Thank you. When this was first brought up to us a few months ago, I was very happy to hear somebody come to a meeting and say these things, to say that we defend our Constitution. This should not be necessary in the United States of America. We should not have to retake an oath of office that we've already taken. But we are living in unprecedented times where executive power and authority are being, are trampling every other branch of government, where we have branches of government sitting back and allowing an executive office to run roughshod over the rest of the government, where we have a Congress that is willingly sitting to the sideline, doing nothing, while an executive reigns in power for himself. This isn't about partisanship or party. I could care less who the president is. Any president and any expansion of executive powers is a threat to our constitutional republic. We are a constitutional republic government. We have a constitution that is the law of the government. The government makes laws for the people, and that's the U.S. Code. But the Constitution is the laws for the government that the government has to follow. And what we are seeing now is blatant and intentional ignoring of these rules and laws that our founding fathers put in place. And I am a big believer that our founding fathers were brilliant people who put in a system of government that had never been tried before, and that has succeeded for 250 years, creating one of the most powerful and most persevering nations in the history of mankind. It is our duty to stand up and say no to tyranny in all of its forms, whether it's an executive, a monarch, a dictator, or anyone who tries to take power away from the people. We're here because of you, we're here for you. And that is our duty. Working in government is not a job, it's public service. And unfortunately, too many elected officials have forgotten the public service part, and instead serve themselves and the people that bankroll them. So I fully support this resolution, and I want to thank Dr. May for the opportunity to present it here. And I ask all of my colleagues, and I ask all of you to continue to stand for our Constitution, no matter who the executive is, and to always, always stand tall and defend the right of the people. Thank you.
Counsel Fitch?
I also support this resolution. Thank you, Counselor Shade, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Peter May, and everybody for coming forward with this. This makes it very easy, cut and dry for us. This is the way that I see it. This is a very simple thing. I know that, you know, resolutions, yes, we're not going to change the federal government with this resolution, but our community is asking us to do this. Our community has made this very easy for us to make this statement here. And I also consider it an honor to state that we, as elected representatives of the City of North Adams, condemn the concept of an American monarch or dictator and any and all policies that undermine the Constitution, the structure and function of our democracy, and the rule of law, both here and across the globe. I think we should do this. I don't understand why we would not do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? This will be a roll call vote.
Wait, we still have.
All right, we're on the room here. Okay.
You need to wear a lighter suit, because he doesn't look over this way.
Counsel Call.
All right. All right, so, now the opinion people don't want to hear. And this has come forward, I have stood by this philosophy since I have served. This has nothing to do with any particular candidate, but, you know, we serve as a non-partisan officials, and that choice was made by the community some point in the past to ensure that our council members aren't tied to any specific political parties. And despite what's being said tonight, it is clearly one party that's being attacked. It's crucial that we approach our decisions without leaning towards red or blue, focusing instead on what's best for our community. In the last election, 32% of North Adams residents voted for the national candidate that this resolution is targeting, 32%. While that didn't include me, should we dismiss the voices of those who did? Is this the role of what the City Council is supposed to be doing? This resolution stands in contrast to the previous one we passed, which aimed to establish our home as a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ+ community. What advantages does this new resolution offer us? It seems likely it will deepen divisions within the community rather than foster unity. While some may celebrate it, others will likely feel frustrated, leaving many questioning its overall impact. Our focus should be on addressing the issues that directly affect our city and its residents, where we can actually make a difference. While our national politics can influence local communities, City Council meetings primarily are addressing local matters. If the resolution highlighted specific national budget cuts impacting our city, I might be on board. But the resolution in front of us is not what many of you said. The resolution was very simple and said that we reject being governed by kings, monarchs, and dictators without ruling many specifics. Specifics were listed in your speeches that I heard ahead of time, but they were not listed in this resolution. Regardless of his self-perception, he doesn't hold that power, and I wouldn't want to give him the satisfaction that thinking we are considering a resolution him the satisfaction that thinking we are considering a resolution is centered around him. City councils lack the authority to address most national political issues. However, it doesn't stop us as individuals from engaging in marches, protests, and supporting various causes or candidates at a national level to influence change on issues we care about. I participated in all of the above and continue to express my political views outside these chambers. I have given more donations in the past three years to Congress and Senate campaigns across the country than I ever did before, and that is to try to change, you know, I don't disagree with what people are saying, but my opinion is that it's not for the chambers. I personally agree with the sentiments many have regarding on this individual, but I believe the council chamber shouldn't be a platform for local officials to rally for or against national candidates. This is something I have stood for all along. Again, outside, I would be right there with you, holding a sign, marching, but in here, I just feel like it's not the place. And that's just, that is my opinion. So, thank you.
Counselor Leskowitz.
I'd like to echo everything that Counselor Bona said. Regardless of the context of what gets presented in front of us, I still stay consistent with my votes on resolutions, and I honestly can't follow through with this one. I may feel the same way as you all do, but I feel the same as, this doesn't belong on council floor. And I do respect all your opinions, because I'm with you on most of them, but to be in council here, I'll stay consistent as what I am, and I'm prepared for what will probably come tomorrow. Thank you.
Counselor Fitch, and then Counselor Blackmore.
Yes, I just wanted to say, whereas I do disagree with the two previous statements that were made, I commend these counselors for stating, you know, their clear case. I really respect you for saying, for saying that. It takes courage to say those things, and I just really appreciate both of you very much so. I do, however, believe that this is clear-cut and dry enough to show that this is not about party or an individual candidate. This is a statement that we can make about protecting our democracy.
Counselor Blackmore.
Yeah, I got a lot of things to say. So what else is new? One, I just want to clarify, it's the Declaration of Independence that was 250 years ago. The Constitution was not ratified until 1788 and wasn't effective until 1789, just because, you know, you're talking stats and talking details and, get the, those are the details. But I don't think that defending the Constitution or prioritizing and listening to our residents is partisan politics. Is it partisan politics? Ask the people in Great Barrington, or Monterey, or Worcester, when their residents were picked up by ICE, some of them illegally. So I do think it impacts us. Things are happening in our communities, and what's to say they aren't knocking on our door next week or tomorrow? Secondly, and I said this before at the last resolution we brought forward, these are extraordinary times. We haven't seen the McCarthy era that I've heard about from my parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles, is the closest we've come to where we are, and that wasn't what we're seeing now. I say extraordinary times call for extraordinary measures, and I support this resolution. I don't like the wording of it too much, but I like the principle.
Counselor Shade.
Thank you. Well, the reason this is vague is to intentionally not be partisan, because it doesn't matter who the executive is or what party is in power. The principle remains the same, and the principle is that we oppose monarchies. If that is partisan, we're living in the wrong country, because I'm pretty sure this nation was founded on the idea that we should never have a monarch or a dictator or a single executive in power of the entire government. That is the entire reason that this nation was founded, that we went to war against Great Britain. So if people find the idea of a monarch as partisan, perhaps they'd like to go back to Great Britain. They're in the wrong country, because we don't recognize kings here, we don't recognize queens here, we do not recognize monarchs, we do not recognize sole executive power. We recognize a constitutional republic and a democracy where the people have the power over the government. Period.
Counselor Morrow.
I just also want to echo what Counselor Shade said about it not mattering who is in power, what party they are, or what, who they're affiliated with. What is happening currently is not okay. And I use this quote with the last resolution that we passed, "Small steps lead to big changes." Even though we are a small city, it doesn't, this is saying that you're hearing us, you see us, we do not agree with this, and there needs to be a change. And if we're a small city who is passing a resolution like this, that's something huge, and that is something that people will listen to and people will see, and it will lead to a lot of big changes, hopefully, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Breen.
I'm 72 years old, and I've lived in North Adams for 72 years. And I get a lot of phone calls, because I've had the same phone for 50 years. And people call me up, and when they say, "Hey, Pete," I've known them for a long time. We have, this is a mill town. People scratch to make livings and send their kids to school. We have a lot of older people that have prescriptions they can't pay, and it's getting worse. Now, there's a plan to make it worse. We have young people that, in other places, they give backpacks to the kids on Friday so they have food for the weekend. We should do that here. You know, when you're taking food from a child, or you're taking medicine from an adult, the working people need to say, "What the hell is going on?" And this is local. We have people suffering, and this is the tip of the iceberg. I, I can't say enough about Dr. May bringing it forward. We're a community that helps the community, and this is something we need to do. It's not against someone, it's for someone: your neighbors, your grandparents, your children. We're going through a budget that we already see things falling on the wayside, left and right, from grants, from schools. It's going to be horrendous. And what's happening for us, we're being strangled. And when we're being strangled, we're being smothered. They don't want to have any sound from us. And this is something that we have to do. We have to circle the wagons, and we've got to help everyone.
Counselor Shade.
Thank you. Yesterday was Memorial Day, the day where we honor the lives of those who gave everything they had, sacrificed their lives for this nation, for this idea of a nation that all people are equal, and that this nation is a constitutional republic. I can't think of a better way to honor service members who have given their lives than to support what they fought and died for, which is to state that we support a constitutional republic, and that we are against monarchy and dictatorship, because that's what so many fought and died for. World War II veterans fought against dictators in Italy, in Germany, in Japan. These people sacrificed their lives for this idea that is in front of us today. I can't think of a better way to honor them the day after Memorial Day than to support this.
Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
No. No.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
No.
Five A's.
Five A's. Okay. Okay, that is the end of our regular agenda. Committee reports in minutes.
Point of order? Just for clarification, the resolution passes, correct?
That is correct, yes. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Hearing none. Moving on to licenses. Have none. Open forum, this is the opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
Virginia Morgan, 36 Holden Street. I just wanted to say that if you, or it becomes the mechanism of the Finance Committee meetings to, you know, allow for public discussion, I would have some suggestions. One is, I came to all the meetings last year, and I know how it goes, so the first suggestion is, if somebody in the public wants to really engage in these meetings and be prepared with questions, they should have access to materials in advance of the meeting so they can come with questions prepared, if that's what they want to do. And I do not believe that anything has been publicly posted. The second is, it would be very helpful to people to have a little more precision about the agenda topics. Not everyone has the budget on their desk, and I had to go from the agendas to the budget itself to make sure it was clear to me what was under certain topics. We have a shorthand here, you know, we all know general government, people in the room do, an average citizen looking at general government isn't going to know. And if that goes across two meetings, then they might have a topic that doesn't come up to meeting two, but they won't know that until they've gone to meeting one. That is adding to the burden on citizens. And then, I just want to say, I think that holding a meeting on Sunday is an excellent idea and may actually make it open to more people, but that meeting does have a specific agenda. That is not an open-ended discussion, and I'm sure that the meeting would focus on those important agenda topics. So I still support a public hearing, and, but I also think if people want to come to the Finance Committee meeting, they should have resources available to them so they can actively participate and be prepared.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
My name is Barbara May, 119 Summit Avenue, and I want to thank the entire city council for adopting this resolution, and I even thank the people who objected to it, because I thank you for thinking deeply about this and caring enough, and telling us your reasons. And your reasons were inspiring and wonderful, or just, you know, we need to know what you think and what you feel, and you need to know what we think and what we feel. And I really appreciate it. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on open forum? Step up to the mic, name an address for the record, please.
Richard David Green, 546 Union Street, apartment 20B. And I think it's important that this should be a voice that represents Republicans. Well, I'm not really a Republican, but I sure do like moderate Republicans, like Cindy McCain, who I heard today on NPR, speaking in behalf of somehow getting enough food to the regions of the world that need it, which the Trump and Musk idiots have cut off. And we live in a global world. This is, it's nice to think that we can totally focus on legislation within a town, or within a state, or a constitution within one nation, but we're going to have to go a little farther than that. And to do it, we're not going to do it with world revolution. That's been tried a little bit in the past century and has been a terrible failure. We're going to have to have connections among moderates of all sorts, and we're going to have to find ways of doing it with people like Cindy McCain, or her former husband, John McCain. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, please step up to the mic.
My name is Doon Mackay. I live at 363 Eagle Street, and I'm going to try to go through three topics in my two minutes. So one, I wish to, oh, he's here. Richard Desadi, last time, at our last meeting, spoke about having taken out the papers to initiate a charter review for the city of North Adams, and I wanted to bolster that. As Counselor Fitch pointed out last time, many of the municipalities in the city, in the state of Massachusetts, do these reviews on a periodic basis, six years, 10 years, 15 years. North Adams set it up so that it requires a large percentage of voters to petition to have their, to review our city charter, the rules that we live by and govern by. And the last time that was done is 1965. It's, the city has changed a little bit since then. It's about time to make some, to at least review and make some updates. That was topic one. Topic two, the Husick Water Quality District is, has, I spoke last time about their consideration about bringing in additional sewage sludge, which would quite possibly bring in additional contaminants to our sewage supply, I mean, not supply, processing, refinement. They did decide to continue with their current system that they've been doing for many years with composting, which would then, is free to be picked up by the public and also sold for spreading on land and for various uses, not agricultural, which does allow for the distribution of heavy metals and PFAS and similar contaminants, which is a thing that many of us mildly oppose. This is, so, it become, they posed it as something of a budget issue, where the Husick Water Quality District is being, their North Adams budget is being discussed. Ah, darn it.
And your time is up.
Well, I'd also like to say, one last thing, the Bellows Pipe Trail is gorgeous right now, and Mayor Mathi is agreed to meet with some of the representatives.
Save much for us in the county of Tully's. Go up there and see some beautiful outfalls.
Thank you. All right. Moving on from open forum. Mayor's updates. Mayor?
Thank you, President Sapienza. Just a couple of, two quick updates. Starting on June 2nd, June 2nd through June 12th approximately, you're going to start seeing some work on the Veterans Memorial Bridge. We have partnered with Mass DOT, and they are helping us replace some of the trusses. I don't want anyone to be alarmed that we're taking down the bridge or doing anything drastic like that quite yet. We are just making some repairs so we can continue to use it. With that, the Reconnecting Communities grant continues. We are fortunate that has not been affected, our funding has not been affected. We do have some group sessions coming up, so please check out our website for that. Also, I'm pleased to announce that Maria Kozik, my current administrative officer, will now be our new Director of Community Development. Maria joined us about 10 months ago and took over the administrative officer role. She hit the ground running, has been very focused on many of our large projects, and we look forward to having a economic development spin in the Office of Community Development. As I mentioned before, our longtime director, Michael New Valley, is retiring. We will miss Mike. We hope to retain him in some kind of capacity, but we're very excited about the changes that will come to that office. And I will miss Maria in the administrative officer role, but to me, this is a good move. I trust Maria. She's a solid person, and she loves North Adams, and she really looks to improve and better North Adams, and is very open to planning, zoning, all these front ordinances that we talk about, but most importantly, helping me make North Adams thrive. So this is exciting news. We will be posting the administrative officer position again, but I feel confident in Maria's abilities, and I just wanted to share that with you publicly before you see the budget and, like, what are you doing, Mayor? But we have a lot of good things coming in community development. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, liaison up. Okay, liaison updates and counselor updates. Counselor Shade?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, as was said not too long ago, Mr. Dasati has taken out petitions for charter review, so if that's something that interests you in seeing our charter get reviewed, and you want to see that on the ballot because it does require a ballot initiative, please see Mr. Dasati after the meeting. Be happy to share that with you. I'd also like to remind everybody that if you are interested in making other changes in government, nomination papers are available. So we'd love to have some new people, new offices, new, um, new candidates be part of the process and run, so if that's something you're interested in, you can go to the city clerk's office and get nomination papers, and I look forward to seeing some new candidates this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Yes, a couple of things through the chair to the mayor, actually, if you're willing. Just wondering if people are curious about finding the budget, how should they go about finding the budget?
Yes, we, I was working on the budget right up to this meeting, so we will be posting it online under the draft fiscal year twenty-six budget and compensation classification plan, and at the meetings, we will have copies of all the material that will be discussed. Could you attach them to, I'm sorry, I was just going to say from a, can you attach it to the, I know we've already posted all the agendas, but could we add these as papers for the agenda? So that, because that's where people, I think, are going to more easily look for it. That's all. I'm trying to make it user-friendly. Can add it right into the calendar? Yeah, that would be great. Thank you for the suggestion. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Counselor Bona?
Did you have your hand up?
Oh, just, just one, one issue. Thank you. I don't recall if this is under charter review or not, but it really, gosh, frustrates me so much when I hear that we have to publish notices in a paper and we're unable to do so. What the heck? So I just, I hope we can get that figured out somehow.
It's very frustrating, yes. Yep. Counselor Bona?
You still mine?[1429.78][1429.78](LAUGHING). But that is, that is something we have discussed for a long time. I remember discussing it with Counselor Coridi when she was here, about one of the things our charter does say is that our public notices must be put into a local newspaper. And that was fine when we had the North Adams transcript, and now they go into Berkshire Eagle, and nothing against the Eagle, but the number of subscribers to the Eagle that are North Adams population is very small, but yet it's costing us considerably more because it's a county paper versus a local paper. So we're spending a lot more money actually hitting a lot less people, where this is also, though, something that has gone to the state. But this is something new, where we have actually had public notices held up, a number of them in one meeting, because we were told that their paper was too full with ads. And so this sort of backs up our argument of, you know, why can't we just have them published online, you know, where everyone can see them a lot more and easier? But something, I guess, we will continue to, to fight, because again, every public notice we put in costs hundreds to thousands of dollars for these little tiny publications. And while I get they support the newspaper, but if they're not really hitting the residents they're supposed to, or tying us up and holding us up from getting things passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
On that topic, this is something I researched thoroughly. I thought we might be able to do a hometown petition, but unfortunately, because it's in our charter, even the hometown petition in rule means nothing because our charter says we have to do it. So really, the only option we have is to amend the charter, which is another reason why I support the idea of a charter review, so please sign the petition. Thank you.
And just to emphasize Counselor Bona's point, this particular ad regarding the licensed marijuana establishments was a full column in the Thursday Berkshire Eagle. The price of this particular ad was eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Smaller ads, such as this one, hundred and nineteen dollars, hundred and fifty-nine dollars for this particular ad.
That's blown up, is it correct?
This is blown up.
Yeah, correct.
So we can read it.[1584.19][1584.19](LAUGHING).
So, yes, yeah. That one you obviously cannot read, it's very small. This one was a chart, it was a three-column-wide chart. The Eagle has to typeset this, we cannot typeset these in-house, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. This is for the parking permits. The ordinance that was brought up regarding the commission appointments, this was about a column, a half a column, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And lastly, the one regarding the capital outlet plan, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And if you do the math, it was about twenty-eight hundred, if I'm correct?
It was over two thousand.
Over two thousand dollars.
And those are just recent?
Those are recent, yes.
Those are just the recent ones, and there's more that I'll be needing to put in.
And one thing I want to say I'm very pleased with is a sure sign of spring, is I saw the parklet being unloaded from the truck this morning and is being placed on Eagle Street, so our Friday morning coffees will be coming up very soon. Yes, thank you. Any other, Counselor Fitch?
Sorry, as you just reminded me by saying about the parklet, the crosswalks are being painted right now. Mayor Maxi, your whole administration, Maria Kozic, thank you. Thank you so much for helping to brighten up downtown, and really looking forward to seeing those completed.
Thank you. Any other counselor updates? Okay. Counselor Leon, or, I'm sorry, Clerk Leonazio, do you have anything for us tonight?
So in regards to the nomination papers, I just want to make sure that anybody who is coming to do nomination papers or pick up nomination papers knows that I'm doing appointments for these so that I can sit down, I have a packet for people, and I go over that packet. And when they are doing their nomination papers, I do the certifying of their name, and then they are also, um, within our office completely set because their papers are being, um...
Notarized?
Oh, notarized, thank you. Breen?
We'd be happy.
At the same time. So when they leave, they're leaving with everything ready to have the signatures. And just as an FYI, I am taking some time this week, so Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I'm not available. I am going to be at the Finance Committee meeting, but I'm not going to be in the office. So next week, if anybody is looking to do nomination papers, please reach out to the office, and it can be scheduled into my schedule for next week.
Thank you. Any correspondence? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, move.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.